The City Council meeting and the successor agency, the Housing Authority, and the Public Facilities Financing Corporation meetings will come to order. Please rise and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start off with oral communications. Members of the audience are invited to address the City Council on any item on this agenda or not on this agenda. Public comments will not be taken during each individual agenda item, except for public hearing items. Comments on public hearing items will be heard when that item is scheduled for discussion. Under the provisions of the Brown Act, the legislative body is prohibited from engaging in discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. However, your concerns may be referred to as staff or set for discussion at a later date. Each speaker will be limited to speaking once for up to three minutes. I'd like to apologize to those at home who are just tuning in. We got a few-minute late start because we had a study session concerning certain items, and I apologize for the delay. Madam Clerk, do we have any speaker cards?
Mayor, the first speakers are Alina and Salvador with San Dimas High School.
Good evening. Mayor Ror, City Council, City Manager, staff, and members of the audience. My name is Alina Gintanilla, and this is Salvador Renteria. We are students at San Dimas High School, and tonight we're going to tell you what's going on with the Saints.
First off with our arts. Our band qualified for state finals for the third year in a row, and this time with a highest score of 88.05. Next, our choir singers had a wonderful weekend with their sold-out concert on Friday, and on Saturday, their chamber choir had a blast caroling all through downtown San Dimas for the holiday es shravaganza. Student conductor Sophia Wash, a senior, led the singers in Jingle Bells. We also had Artuba Christmas participate in the holiday parade, and they had an excellent time. Our dance team class put on their first show since 2020. Students demonstrated their mastery of tap, hip-hop ballet, and contemporary styles of dance. Finally, our drama department is gearing up for their next show, Willy Wonka.
Moving on to athletics, winter sports have started, which includes girls' and boys' basketball, girls' and boys' wrestling, girls' and boys' soccer, girls' water polo, and competitive cheer. Girls' wrestling was able to win against Benita in the girls' wrestling Smudge Pot Annual Rivalry Match from 48 to 30. Today, we are proud to say that the girls' soccer team beat our rival, Benita, 3 to 0. And as we speak, the boys' soccer team is playing Benita, with Benita leading 1 to 0. Fall sports have two teams in undefeated league championships in the new Hacienda League for girls' volleyball and girls' tennis. Girls' golf, with co-league champion Jocelyn River, was league MVP. We had seven teams make it to CIF playoffs with football, girls' volleyball, girls' tennis, girls' golf, girls' cross-country, girls' flag football, and boys' water polo. Girls' flag football and football made it all the way to quarterfinals. This is the first season for girls' flag football and girls' golf. In terms of academics, as semester one comes to a close, our co-teaching team visits an inclusive practices demonstration site at Dul Norte High School and came away with some key takeaways to improve our co-teaching program. Our Math 1, 2, and 3 teachers representatives recently collaborated with math teachers from Benita to make adjustments to the upcoming benchmark assessments. We are proud to announce that based on our dashboard data, we have some growth in three indicators. We moved from orange to blue in English learning progress, yellow to orange, or yellow to blue in graduation rate, yellow to green in mathematics. We also maintained suspension rates and ELA staying in green. Lastly, we are now in yellow in college career preparedness.
Lastly, our activities. Finals week is quickly approaching with our ASB planning several dress-up days to get everyone in the holiday spirit. We had a train come on campus for our Polar Express activity. Link Crew is hosting a freshman cocoa and cramb and pancake breakfast to get them ready for their first-ever finals. Our integrity team and courageous conversations are analyzing student data as it relates to school connectedness and schools' values. Our counseling team had a fast-food workshop, and we are currently receiving visits from college representatives. Our 10th-grade English team hosted guest speakers at the BCA for a presentation tied to their reading of Just Mercy. Lastly, you may have seen our student volunteers out at the holiday es shravaganza volunteering their time, such as Rotary Interaction Club, and even having fun with their families and friends. Thank you for putting on that event so students can have that opportunity.
Thank you for allowing us to give you this update. Happy holidays, and we'll see you next month.
Happy holidays to you and to your fellow students.
The next speaker is Kathy Schofield, speaking on pickleball.
Schofield. So, good evening. I'm Kathy Schofield. I've been a resident of San Dimas for over 36 years, and I just want to thank you for your dedication to our city and for listening to me tonight. My husband and I have raised two daughters here who attended Benita's schools, and I've worked at Allen Avenue School, I've worked at San Dimas High School, and I worked at Chaparral High School, where I retired about a year and a half ago. In regards to resurfacing some unused tennis courts to pickleball courts, I spoke before at a budget meeting in May where it looked like there would be no chance due to such budget cuts, but I was informed that there was discussion on an agenda item tonight, so here I am with a glimmer of hope. When I retired, a friend who is here introduced me to pickleball, and I was hooked. The exercise was fun, engaging, I met new people, which as a senior, I know you can't believe it, but it's true. I'm a senior citizen and retired. I really needed that connection with people. The city's mission statement says that "The city is committed to excellence in the planning of community and due to consideration for the physical and social environment." Pickleball is this. It is inclusive, filled with laughter, exercise, and so much more. I can play with grandkids, I can play with people in their 80s. At the school that I worked at, at Chaparral Vista High School recently this year, which is the continuation alternative school, the PE coach introduced it to kids, and most of the kids, they just absolutely loved it. These are kids who do not want to participate in PE. These kids do not want to play anything, and they love it, and they're really into it. They feel very successful at it, and the problem is, they'll play at school, but after school, there's no place for them to go and play. So wouldn't that be great to have something in our city where they also could go and play compared to making bad choices after school? Because a lot of these kids make bad choices, so pickleball is a great choice. Lone Hill Park has two tennis courts that are not fully utilized. Only one tennis court can equal four pickleball courts. It just needs resurfacing, paint, nets, racks, not a lot of things to make this happen. So, in this world today, we need social interaction and physical activity. For me and others, there is a need for pickleball in San Dimas. Thank you, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and Happy New Year.
Take care. Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, those were all the speaker cards.
Anyone wishing to speak to the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the City Council requests a separate discussion. Anyone wishing to remove something or discuss something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have actually a question as well as a recommendation. So for, why don't I go ahead and ask my question first? This is related to item... This is related to the construction project for downtown with holiday decorations. Could we have, is it Cherry? Thank you. I have two quick questions for you. The first question is that I wondered, the holiday decorations, I assume, are for future years, not for this year, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then the holiday decorations, what is their lifespan about? Because I imagine we'll probably have to refresh this every number of years. Is it typically around five years?
Typically, four to five years, yes.
Four to five years, okay, great. And so is it just replacing existing holiday decorations, or are these net new?
These would be new, so, yes, these would be new for the new polls.
Okay, cool. And then the other question I had is, I did notice that the range of bids, I was a little surprised because the bid that we went with was 8.2, or 800,000 approximately, then the largest, the highest bid was 1.6. What explains how one bid is 2x to the other one? I was, I wondered if there were certain factors using different materials or what, labor costs? What was driving that?
So, there are a lot of factors that would drive it. We specify the materials, so everybody has to use the same materials. Sometimes it, whether a contractor needs to fill their schedule, the upcoming schedule, they'll bid a little bit more hungrily, or if they, if they have a lot of work, then they're not, you know, they're not as aggressive in their bid.
I see, got it, makes sense. That's, those are all my questions regarding that item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the other thing that I would ask council to consider before we approve this is, I did notice that the audited financial statements had a lot of information, and given its importance, as we start taking a closer look at our budgets and our fiscal health. For next year, I would ask that council consider having a presentation with our auditors so we could ask questions and go into this in detail. I personally don't think that this belongs in the consent calendar given the, given the scope and scale of the report. So with that, I think that this year, I'm fine with it being in the consent calendar, but when we do make a motion, I would ask that whoever makes that motion asks that next year we have the auditors and the presentation of the audited report so that we can go into a little bit more detail in it. That's it. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, if I, if I might just comment. So myself, I've served on the Audit Committee for many years since I've been elected. Councilmember Weber and I, in fact, actually met with the auditors last night and did their annual council member briefing with staff. And I would just point out that staff has done an outstanding job, and I want to commend Michael and your team and Brad. When I got onto the Audit Committee in 2017 after I was elected, it was the mayor and I. And thank you, Emmett, because I think Emmett volunteered me to be on the Audit Committee. But, but I will say, the staff and the city have made great strides and improvements along the lines of not just internal controls, but software enhancements that the staff has brought before council and over the budget cycles, and those adjustments have led themselves to us being in a much greater place of accountability, a much greater place of responsibility. And, and I appreciate the leadership that Michael, you've demonstrated over that transition through the software change. And as I said in the Ad-Hoc Committee meeting last night, I've asked that Michael and staff bring forward any recommendations for council in the upcoming budget that would assist in terms of not just furthering accountability and compliance as it relates to the finances, but also to further that process as it relates to any records management system or otherwise inventory management system that would assist in increasing accountability of the logistical aspect of items that then later on translate into a financial accountability piece. So I just wanted to take a moment to say that, and I appreciate the city isn't a much, is in a solid place, and, and in fact, I don't know, maybe it's, maybe it's appropriate to just pull item number three, and then let's have Michael maybe just speak a little bit to the audit after we do the consent calendar, because I think there are, to your point, some things worth noting in this year's audit.
Sure, yeah.
Okay. With that, I would move that we approve all items on the consent...
Fast clarification.
Yes, yeah.
Are you, this is nothing to do with the recommendation I have for next year, having the auditors so we could ask questions?
Right, yeah, no.
Okay, great.
That, we can do that after we dispose of that item. So I would move that we... Motion that we move to approve the consent calendar items number 1 through 7, excluding item number 3, which will be pulled for a staff report.
Great. Second thought.
Second by Councilwoman Atakas. Okay. Any further conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none, motion carries. Let's bring back item number 3. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council members. Michael O'Brien, Administrative Services Director. Just to give a little background on the audit process. The auditors come out twice a year, first in June, where they come out, verify that the adopted budget is what was incorporated to our system, that it all ties together, and they do a number of internal control testing. They're trying to make sure that we'll record our bank account and what matches what we have in our system. They're verifying the processes we go through, whether it's cutting checks or taking cash receipts, that there's various people not just taking the money, but verifying that it reconciles to the cash register and reconciles to the casino, that there's other managers like myself or the kind of supervisors signing off on those. Same thing with check reviews, that department heads are reviewing the invoices, signing off on those invoices, that those, that paper trail is matching what ends up going through on the warrants that you guys ultimately approve. So they do a number of those tests and kind of do a preliminary audit review at the June timeframe. And then they come back in September for the start of the actual audit, where we have final recordings of all our revenues, our expenditures, and then at the end, we produces this annual comprehensive financial report that was presented to you tonight. As far as the results of that financial audit for the year, there's a couple of major factors. One is what we call our net position, which is when we're looking at not just the general fund, but all our special funds, all our obligations, like our pension obligations, our other post-employment benefits, which may be, which mostly consists of the Pemca minimums that we pay retirees who continue with our health coverage and what that obligation is long-term, and any bonds outstanding, those payables that are computed in that. And then lastly, our capital assets, net of depreciation. And for the city, our net position increased to a total of $130,939,119. That was an increase of 3.4 million over the prior year. In terms of the general fund itself, which, if you look at our budget, consists of the General Fund 001 Fund, the New Equipment Reserve Fund 70, and the Capital Asset Replacement Reserve Fund 100, and a number of those in the General Fund 01, we have assigned fund balances and then the unassigned. So the unassigned is basically saying, nothing is earmarked for that. That's just basically money we have to help support any projects or anything, we want to use that money to support. In total, at the end of 2024, we increased from $42,289,56 to $44,974,718, an increase of just over 2.9 million. In the unassigned fund balance itself, the difference was an increase in $1,159,846. Of that balance, we did have some carryovers, meaning we had procured or we entered into contracts or certain projects that we budgeted in the general fund that we couldn't get to, and we then carried over that budget. You guys approved that in one of your October meetings. That total carryover relating to General Fund 170 or 100 funds was $1,128,000. So when you reduce that from the 2.9, the general fund had a true increase of about $1,816,867. Of the unassigned itself, that was about 762,000, those carryovers. So the difference in unassigned was about an increase of roughly four, a little over 400,000. So it was a good year in the sense that we did increase our surplus. What led to that was mostly because we had 4 million of ARPA funds that we dedicated to use to expenditures that were mostly, would have been in the general fund. One thing that was new this, this year is we did move $3 million to fund the Loop Project. Once we get to that, that's now moved in the infrastructure Fund 12. So if we, that is fully funded and we get those bids, it'll hopefully take care of that. So you could say that's a net 1 million positive in the fact that we used 3 million we wouldn't have otherwise, we had 4 million we wouldn't have otherwise gotten. The other big factor this year is we had much higher interest revenue returns. When we take our idle cash and we invest it in bonds, treasuries, CDs, LIF, Cal Trust investments that we do, this year we averaged over 4%. Where in prior years, we were lucky to even get a percent. I mean, the difference in the last couple of years, how interest rates went up was tremendous, and when you have over $80 million in the bank, 4% is, ends up being a big number. So it definitely helped our cause this year. And then as the Fed started lowering rates, the fair market values of our investments that we did at higher rates became more valuable, so that kind of raised that number when we trued that number up at the end of the year, which is a requirement by the Gatsby. So those are the big, major factors, which led to a good year. Obviously, in the current year, we did project that we may end up in a deficit. We'll know more when we get to mid-year and I'll report back to you on that, but as far as the end of the 2324 fiscal year, it was another positive year for the city, and we hope to continue that trend. And that's my report.
Any questions?
The only thing I would comment is, Michael, well, one is, just for the public's benefit, were there any significant findings in the audit this year?
No, the auditors gave an unmodified opinion, which is their version of the cleanest opinion they can give. They had no significant findings or anything of note that they brought up during the committee meeting or on the paperwork.
This is what it feels like to be an attorney. I knew the answer to that question. I got to ask it. No, I just wanted to point that out. That's outstanding, and I think that that's a testament to the work you guys have been doing. And as I've already said, the auditors themselves, for the public's benefit, were very complimentary of our city and our staff. In fact, they pointed out, and I know Councilmember Weber was on the call, that, you know, it's not often that they work with a city and a community that is responsive to the recommendations or even is engaging and transparent. And so I applaud the city, and I hope that we continue that tradition, and thank you for all your work as you've done.
Michael, I just have one question. Have we liquidated all the ARPA funds to this point?
Yes, we were required. The requirement was actually to be either in contrast... The requirement was actually be either in contrast or completely spent by December 31st. Our goal was to just go ahead and have it all done and completed by end of June, so we met that goal. We utilized the funds, and we're not at risk of losing those funds at this point.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add that I learned that our city received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting in 2023, and I do think that this year's report is definitely worthy of that. I know we're applying for it, and I just want to thank you because I was able to go through this and understand it, and that's huge for somebody to be able to see what we're doing and the stability that we've created, and I'm very much appreciative of the staff.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion on --
May I ask one question as well? Michael, as you know, I know that we're still in negotiations with staff. Do we expect any outcome of those negotiations to have any kind of an impact on the budget forecast during here in the audit? Or is that kind of factored in some way?
I believe at your November 10th meeting, you've approved all the MOUs and resolutions. So those salary adjustments have been incorporated now, and we increased our budget based on the projections for those, based on the results of those agreements. I don't foresee any more for the current year to be factored in for any adjustments after what's been already approved. So I think we're good until next year.
So before making the motion and hearing your comments earlier, I guess a question for Jeff or Brad is, I would wonder if it makes more sense, you know, we have the Audit Committee, and the Audit Committee, you know, two of us meet with the auditors, and, you know, they ask us also the questions if we suspect any malfeasance or any other nonsense going on. I wonder if it makes sense to just have the auditors do the presentation a second time with two other council members, and then they could ask their questions and perhaps also engage in that similar process rather than have it come here, only because I think there's specific questions and other matters that could be discussed in that setting. Is there any issue with having them do that?
I do not see a legal issue with that, no.
Is that something that would --
Yeah, I just don't have --
I may have questions. It's in the consent calendar, so it's not really the appropriate time to pick it out and do that. So that's my main point, is I don't think it's the right forum, but I want a forum to be able to go into some detail and depth about how they arrived at their conclusions or whatnot, what they looked at. So yeah, that would be an acceptable alternative.
Okay. So maybe in the future, we do the Audit Committee, or you guys can just schedule the meetings and expand the meeting with the auditor?
Yeah. Mayor, councilmembers, yeah, we can do that. We can have two different meetings with two sets of councilmembers. Do you want to decide who those are and how that'll work?
Well, I mean, traditionally, the standing committee's been myself, and I think Councilmember Weber's been on it. I think we would just expand it to the two other councilmembers, then the mayor, if he wishes to do one, that would be a third independent meeting, perhaps?
I just want to be careful with the phrasing. We're not going to expand the Audit Committee to more than two councilmembers, but it's going to be like a, just a separate meeting that the auditors will undertake.
Correct, yeah, yeah. No serial meeting, just independent meetings, yes. Yeah, next year, we can plan to do the original Audit Committee, and right after that, we'll have the second meeting, and then we can follow up with the mayor if he would like to have a third meeting. Presentation. Oh, ho, ho, Mr. Mayor.
We'll discuss that at a later date.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, I guess with that understanding, then I would move approval of the audit and receive and file.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries five zero. We'll move on to other business. Discussion on cost to convert a tennis court to a pickleball court. Your staff recommends that City Council receive this report and provide direction appropriate. I'm saddened to see that the lady spoke a little earlier, decided not to stick around for this part of the conversation, but we'll move on to Mr. Wasserman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. I'm Scott Wasserman, Director of Parks and Recreation. This item was initiated by the City Council, who asked that staff return at a future date with an estimate to convert one tennis court into four pickleball courts. And we have provided the estimate. The total estimate, it really depends on how you do it, but we provided the total of $49,500. However, that could be considerably less if the city does not purchase the acoustic panels. In researching the acoustic panels, what I found is that it's a product that claims it's a lot like a windscreen, it's a little bit thicker, and it's supposed to deaden the noise, the impact of the plastic ball hitting the wooden racket. Noise tends to be the biggest complaint with pickleball. In speaking with other cities that have installed pickleball courts in the area, I have yet to find one that has installed the acoustic panels. So I did present the total price as $49,500. That could easily be $29,500. That is what I would recommend if council wishes to move forward. And I'll open it up for council questions at this point.
Would you give us the location where you're proposing it and any of those details, please?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking at the city's tennis courts, the city has about eight tennis courts, and this does not include any of the tennis courts down at the Sportsplex, because those are on school district property. When you look at the courts that we actually have, the question was, which of the courts would make the most sense to convert into a pickleball court based on the distance from the homes? It is generally recommended in the industry that you cite a pickleball court beyond 500 feet of homes. However, that's really difficult to do in a lot of cities, including San Dimas. So what we provided in the staff report, the short answer to your question, Mr. Mayor, would be, we would recommend converting the inside court at Lone Hill Park because -- let me make sure I have my numbers right. That is approximately 123 feet from the nearest home, whereas the tennis courts in the other locations, Ladera Sarah is about 78 feet from the nearest home, and there's not a lot of parking there. We also looked at Pioneer Park and Marchmont Park, which have tennis courts that are within 30 feet or 50 feet of the nearest homes respectively. So that's why council didn't necessarily ask us to make a recommendation, but looking at the courts, that is the one that I would focus on, would be the inside tennis court at Lone Hill Park.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions of Mr. Wasserman?
Yes. So the first question I have is, would the cost of the acoustic panels change if it was added later? In other words, is there -- okay, so it wouldn't, there's no real benefit savings if we were to buy it all at once and install it?
That's correct.
Great. And the second question I have is, I know that there are pickleball courts, I believe, in Glendora and Laverne. Are those within 500 feet of homes, or are those outside of the 500-foot perimeter?
I believe they're within the 500-foot perimeter.
Another question I had is, although I know that it is a little complicated with the Sportsplex courts because they're on school property, but is there any appetite at all maybe from them, since that would solve for it, the northernmost courts especially would be away from homes, and there's, you know, a wall in between them and all that. So if we're concerned about noise, it seems like those would be the safest, even though there is an added complication with the school district. Nonetheless, I mean, people use those courts in the public, right? So.
Correct. You know, those, we could, I've not approached the school district to ask them that question because I didn't really regard them as our tennis courts. We can do that. I can ask them.
What is the funding arrangement with them? Because they're used as public courts, so like what, how does that arrangement look exactly that?
So we have, we have an agreement to, dates back to the 1980s with the school district to maintain the entire, not the entire, the Sportsplex. So that would be the ball fields, some of the amenities that we use. Goes back to the 80s, and I, I think it just, it really is just going to depend on if they're interested. I don't believe they would be interested because I know they use the courts for their classes and for CIF tournaments, and there are a couple of homes there. Legally, we've removed all of our programming from the school district, so the only things that we really have on the land that we maintain would really be the sports user groups on the ball fields.
I see. Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? What is the actual cost of the agreement that we have with the school district to maintain those fields? I know it was dates back to 1980, but it's gone up over the years. What is that actual cost now?
It has. So we have the joint use agreement with the school district. The city provides all the maintenance services, and the school district reimburses the city. So currently, the school district reimburses the city for half the cost of the contract for maintenance, which is $25,000. And I know that city staff puts in over $100,000 worth of work in that, in the Sportsplex. And this is probably another conversation for a different time, but there are a lot of things that city staff maintains that aren't really captured by the contractor. Everything from lights and electrical systems, things like that.
But that excludes the courts.
Steve, can I ask if our park maintenance manager, are we maintaining the courts?
Yes.
Okay. We resurfaced the courts in 2020, so we do provide some level of maintenance there.
Does the school district pay for the lights, or do we pay for the lights?
We pay for the lights. Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I guess, you know, like, I think this, it's contemporary to the conversation only because I think it's a question of responsibility and investment. I mean, if we resurfaced those courts, then it seems feasible to me that we could resurface them to pickleball courts. I mean, that seems reasonable. I guess, was any outreach done on any of these locations just to the residents who might be impacted by any of these sites?
We have not done any outreach.
Okay. I guess, you know, I want to hear from my colleagues, but I mean, to me, there's a few questions. I mean, one would be if the school district would be interested in partnering in the conversion of one or two of those courts into this need that has been expressed in the community. And then number two is, what are the ongoing maintenance costs for a court like this?
We would resurface, actually, I'm going to ask our park maintenance manager, Steve Farmer, to come on up. He can speak about this much better than I can. Maintenance costs for pickleball courts, tennis courts?
The maintenance of the courts is part of our contract with Yeviz, which is roughly $52,000 a year for doing landscape maintenance and basically blowing off the courts on a weekly basis.
I'm sorry, Steve, I didn't understand anything you said. Could you start over, please?
The cost of Splex maintenance is roughly $52,000 a year. We contract with Yeviz, our landscape maintenance contractor, to maintain the turf. They also blow off the tennis courts on a weekly basis. The nets that are put up there, if they need to be replaced, are absorbed by the city. The city also pays for the lights that are used at night by the public. And one thing I wanted to bring up is, there actually is a house on the west side of the tennis courts on Cypress Avenue that's right adjacent to the courts. There's a flight control channel that's roughly 22 feet wide, and there's a house right next to it. So that house is even closer than some of the other parks are.
If I may, I know that when we started this conversation, I would like to say we did bring up the Sportsplex, and wasn't there something to the fact where pickleball courts, the direction was in contrast to the way that tennis courts go, so that the balls actually going, it would create an environment that where tennis wouldn't really work and pickleball wouldn't really work going on at the same time?
Our cost proposal for converting our courts includes a fence between the tennis court and pickleball court, so there would be no interaction of the play between the two courts.
Okay. I do think that the request to look into Lone Hill Park for the pickleball court is very, very reasonable, and I would want community outreach just to let everyone know what the idea is and to open that up for any public comment. But I support looking into Lone Hill Park for the pickleball court.
I support looking into the Splex conversion. I'm also open to Lone Hill Park, but I do think, I agree, some of the Councilmember Nakano's comments, I think there may be less impact to a lesser amount of residents at the Splex where it's located, converted to, or compared to where it would be at Lone Hill Park. But I'm also interested just in the cost and what's associated with that. And when you talk about the lights, just in my experience, like costs themselves, you're not talking about turning on the lights as much as you're also talking about replacement of lights, right?
We do both. We pay the electrical cost for running those lights. Just so we understand, the lighting at Splex has roughly 168 lights between the softball fields, baseball fields, and tennis courts.
Yeah, okay. What's the cost of one bulb replacement?
They're, they're high-pressure sodium as of now, so one bulb is about $78. If we have to replace the ballast, that's about another $140.
Yeah. And how often are we doing that?
They have a 3,000-hour lifespan, roughly. Most of them don't make it 3,000 hours.
Yeah. No, not in my experience either. Okay, all right. So I guess, you know, I'm supportive of looking at both of those. I mean, I'd be curious what the conversation with the school district, you know, lends itself to. If there's interest by the district in a joint venture related to the conversion of those spaces, or even if they're not interested but they are open to it, and it could provide use for young people, then, and seniors, I think that makes a lot of sense to me. And I would almost see that over Lone Hill Park, and because I have concerns also regarding the location of Lone Hill Park, it's really, it's on the far west side of the city, and it's adjacent to a neighboring city, and I just, those places will be utilized by people who have access to them. And that doesn't necessarily mean it's always going to be by our residents. So I think the location of it also makes a difference. And I think it's a cool thing also for the youth of McKinley. I think there's a benefit there, too, that may also see some accessibility benefits. So those are my thoughts on the matter.
I would just like to add that I think one of my concerns is that in the perfect world, this court would be 500 feet away from any type of residence so that we're not disturbing people as much as possible. My guess, I'm picturing Pioneer Park, and we're saying that the residence is about 50 feet away, and I can picture the house is just really on the other side of the tennis court. And my guess would be for the Splex, that other home that's on the other side of the tennis court would probably be similar, about 50 feet. So when you're trying to reach 500, 50 feet just doesn't seem to be enough. I know with Lone Hill, we're at 125 or so, which maybe still doesn't seem like enough, but I think it shows a reasonable awareness from the city that we are trying to do our best and not disturb people.
You know, maybe I'm thinking wrong, but I realize the house to the west side of the Splex is very close, but tennis courts are like four in a row, so there's three additional tennis courts. You could always do the one on the east side of that, and it would work. Weber, you got anything?
No, I agree that if you were to do anything at the Sportsplex, it would be probably relegated to the eastern courts. That would be the way to get the distance. But I'm in favor of moving forward and exploring this and definitely doing the outreach. I think, you know, I'm not going to tell staff what distance I think that we need to look at. I'm sure that we can use, you know, our deductive reasoning and come to a safe distance when we do outreach and see, make sure, maybe this distance issue is not much of an issue at all if the residents around there don't mind having this amenity near their house. So that might be an issue as well.
Nakano?
Yeah, I see, I see the pros and cons of both locations. The reason why I think it is important to look at the Splex is a few reasons. The first is that if you were to convert one of the ones at Lone Hill Park, there's two courts automatically, 50% of the tennis courts would go away, right? In the Splex, I think there's seven courts?
Eight.
It's eight. So the impact, turning one, turning one of the eight into a pickleball court, you know, the percentage is lower. The other thing is that there is a wall that divides the house between the courts. And so I have to believe that there would be some mitigation of sound there versus in Lone Hill Park, you, there's no real wall, it's just open space, and so I would, I would think that sound would travel more. And the last factor that makes me think we should at least look at the Splex is that if we're paying for all of these costs, it seems to me that we should get some, you know, additional return, right? If the school district is using If the school district is using it just largely for the programs, and, I don't know, it just seems like if we put it there, we'll have more residents make use of the lights and other things that we're all paying for as a city. And so that's why I think it's worth looking forward, looking at. I haven't drawn a conclusion in terms of which one I would pick, one or the other, but I would just want to know, is it an option? And then if so, let's have that discussion and then make a decision about which one we think would make the most sense, given all the factors at play. If it's not an option, then we have our answer.
Yeah, just looking at Google Earth, pulled up on my council iPad here. Comes in handy sometimes, but it looks like approximately, it's, if you were to use the easternmost court at the sportsplex, it would be about 180 feet away from houses.
All right, well, I've looked at, personally looked at both of them, and I think when originally, at least I thought, and I could be wrong, that we were talking about what could we get, where could we put them? And I know that someone expressed, I'd like to see two courts, one in, one end of the city and one end in the other end of the city. So we started looking at Lone Hill Park. And Lone Hill Park, it is a distance away, and if you did, if we put the pickleball court on that eastern court, and if we went there and we just put the court, then we could eventually figure out if we needed the panels. And now we're talking about the high school, the plex, and I certainly could agree with that. But I do believe that, let's get one in, maybe don't do the panels yet, let's wait, put a court in, and let you guys come back and tell us which one you finally decided on. Seems like we're moving backwards instead of forward, but I hope we, I hope we're moving forward, because I thought this would be tonight. We would decide, and the pickleball world would be happy, but now they're on a pause. I still would like to figure out how to do two, one in the north end of the city and one in the middle of the city, or the south end of the city. But that would be my belief. But I think we should just look forward to doing one court, hold off on the paneling, and then see how that all works. We'll know right away, guarantee you, you will know right away. So I guess we're going to send it back to you. Is that, is that our goal here?
Yeah, I'm also concerned just where we're going to pull the money from. So I would like staff then to come back, too, with where we think we can make this appropriation from. And, I mean, it sounds like, in light of the audit, it sounds like there may be some funding there, but, you know, in terms of funding priority, I was looking for this to come into the next budget cycle funding priority discussion, to be honest. But if council wants to do it, I could go along with that, but I still want to figure out the site selection, and then we can figure out the funding.
So can we continue this matter to a site certain, a date certain, or?
Yes, I should be able to report back at the next meeting.
Well, Mayor, City Council, let me, I just want to, I'm hearing, you want us to talk to the school district and get an idea if they're willing to work with us, partner with us, if we can put one at the splex. Do you also want us to reach out to the residents around Lone Hill to see what their interest is in having a pickleball court? Or do you just want information back from the school district if this is something they're willing to?
I would start with the school district and not do the community outreach to Lone Hill until we knew the answer to that. So take it in steps.
I agree with that. If they come back and they're, and they're willing, and they're even willing to assist in it, or if they're just open to the idea, I think that helps, you know, this discussion. And then funding, you know, figure out that piece of it, at least when we come back, and then we can figure out the outreach piece and everything else if we need to.
All right, so let me make sure I understand. The courts belong to us, but the land belongs to them. That, the essence of it? We maintain the courts, we do everything, but the land itself belongs to?
We don't use the courts for anything. We don't have any programming out there. We've moved all of our, all of our tennis, you know, programming to other places. So it's really, it's similar to the basketball courts there. We don't use the basketball courts either. So when you ask if they belong to us, we have a joint use agreement to maintain them. We can program them in the after-school hours, but we don't, we don't have a need to do that right now. And I'm not sure if that answers your question, but we're required to maintain them, but they're not really ours.
I guess, maybe this is, this is a separate discussion, but the question that comes to mind is, if we're pulling all of our programming from it, but we're paying to maintain it, why? Like, shouldn't we want to make use of it?
Well, yes, absolutely, we should want to make use to it. I think, so my, we've discussed this before, this joint use agreement, we just processed an amendment with the school district in the past year that makes it a year-to-year agreement because of exactly this question. As we face budgetary pressures, we look at this, we look at this arrangement where the city spends all of the money, and I, Steve mentioned $52,000 for the contract. I said $108,000 because the contract is 52. We spend 100, though, because of all the things that aren't in the contract that staff does. And those were all the bulbs, the irrigation, the electrical, things that aren't captured in the contract.
We're talking $150,000 for maintenance of the?
It's about 100, it's a little over $100,000, and they pay the full cost of the varsity field, and then they pay one-half of the cost to maintain everything else. So sensing that exactly we would be having this discussion, I was probably going to bring it to council later, either in the budget, you know, the budget process, or in the context of our conversation about the recreation center and our relationship with the district.
And what's the upside, Scott? I mean, I'm not hearing any upside for the city to be in this agreement. The city Olympics?
No, we, well, maybe, maybe that's it. But we do that with the school district, we collaborate with them. So we don't need to have the joint use agreement to have that one-day event, you know, at, at one of the schools. And we also get about $36,000 in revenue per year from allocating the sports fields. Obviously, that's not enough to offset what we actually spend on the maintenance.
Right. So I think at this point, okay, we just let it continue it until we figure out what in. Brad, could you hook up with, or Scott, hook up with the district and start talking to them and see what they say? I don't know how much conversation, if there's even been any conversation.
There has.
About, there has been?
Yes.
Okay, about a pickleball court?
No, not the pickleball court, about the joint use agreement. We've discussed it at length.
The joint use agreement is somewhere else. It's not facing us here tonight. It will be facing us.
Yeah, Mayor, City Council, that's a completely different, different conversation. We'll talk to the school district about the pickleball court. My understanding is that how the splex was built, it was, it was a tax that was, funding was used to build that, that requires the school district to allow public access on those fields, those courts, which is why we have a joint use agreement to help maintain it. They're supposed to offset our maintenance cost. It isn't dollar-for-dollar, but that's a different discussion that we'll come back, and we'll break down exactly what that relationship is and what the dollar-for-dollar is, to see if that's something that council wants to be part of.
Let me be clear, I want that discussion. So I'm not being ambiguous about this, that discussion must happen. And I don't know if there's another council member that's interested in that, but hearing no upside to the city, and I understand the history, and I'm very well aware of the history, but I do think, as been said in other meetings, that this discussion that is kind of spiraling out of this particular topic needs to happen, and it's time that it be revisited. Can I just make, I don't disagree, I think that conversation needs to happen, especially in relation to the swimming racquetball club as well. But might I just throw out then philosophically speaking the wisdom in approaching the school district for a joint use partnership agreement with relation to the tennis courts there for a pickleball court usage, if we're then going to immediately turn back around and have a conversation about not being willing to fund it any longer?
I think, I hear you, and I get that, but I also think that there's a lot of discussion to be had around utilization of a lot of the assets related to that whole area. And so, you know, it sounds like we're maintaining them anyways, and it doesn't really sound like we really need permission, I guess, to be able to make the modification. But I think cooperation and support goes a long way. And candidly, I think there's parents that I, that I know would be interested in pickleball courts there for their kids.
No, I'm sure there probably is. I was just throwing that out there, if we're going to have a big ask of them later in relation to those exact things that we're, we're looking at, favors from them now, that just something that we should keep in mind.
I see your point. I still think it's worth, is the option even there, right? Because that can also shape discussions as well. If they say, no, we're going to maintain these, we want the tennis courts as is, and that can play a role in how we think. I do have?
No, I hear you.
I have, I have two questions. The first is, the mayor did get me thinking, I know we're probably not going to do it, but is there any cost benefit to converting two versus ones? In other words, if it ended up being 10% more to convert two courts, then that's something we should know about as well? Or is it just strictly double? Does my question make sense?
It does.
Okay, so that'd be one thing. And then the second is, once council gives approval to move ahead, we've identified the site, how long does it take to build a court? Is it typically like a two-week project? Is it a week project? Is it a month? When would it go from approval to the courts are ready, we have the ribbon cutting, people can now use it?
To address your first question, the cost would be double minus the cost of the fence between the courts. You only need one fence between the courts, not two, so a little less than, a little less than about $24,000 versus $29,000.
Got it, okay.
The process for construction, we'd have to take this out to bid. We can do direct bid based on it being roughly about $29,000. So the bit, that process is fairly quick, and then it's up to us to set the timeline for the contractor to do the work. Resurfacing tennis courts, when we have resurfaced, of course, we have, usually takes about two and a half to three weeks. This one's a little bit more detailed, because you have to cut out the existing net posts and install eight more net posts. And there's a little bit more involved in marking out four courts versus one tennis court. So probably about four to six weeks.
Okay, that's reasonable. Okay, great.
Talking about netting, okay? How often do we have to remove these nets and replace them? There's got to be a maintenance cost there. And what about equipment? Is the equipment supplied by the user, or do we?
We would build a court and supply the net, the equipment's provided by the user.
All right. You got enough information there?
Yes, we do. We'll start by approaching the school district, and then I would expect to report back to the city council as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any further questions before we let them go? Okay. Okay, we'll have, our second issue is a discussion on the new objective design standards for multifamily and mixed-use development in SB 330 and SB 35 eligible projects. Staff?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Louis Torrico, Director of Community Development. This item, before we started the public hearing process, we wanted to bring it to the council for informational purposes, but also to seek input on the design standards that we've drafted so far. So to give you a bit of background, over the recent years, the state has been passing several housing bills that allows different types of housing developments to be allowed by right, which means that they don't have to go before any discretionary review, so they don't, they're not subject to planning commission, development plan review board, or city council review board. These laws also state that these projects are only subject to objective design standards if the city adopts them. Specifically, Senate Bill 330 and Senate Bill 35, both of these bills require projects submitted under these bills to, that they be streamlined through the process and be subject to these objective design standards. There are some criteria for these projects to qualify. For example, some of them include that they have to provide affordable units, have to be at least two-thirds residential if it's a mixed-use development, and must pay prevailing wage rates. Again, these projects are by right and would only be subject to objective design standards. Therefore, the city has been working with a consultant to draft these design standards. The standards will regulate site design and building design elements. Site design standards that we're looking to regulate through these standards include parking design, location, circulation, open space, and building design standards will regulate items such as massing, articulation, colors and materials. The overall goal of these standards is to maintain some local control by establishing standards that will result in high-quality projects that the city is used to seeing built and would be compatible with existing developments. Development standards related to height, setbacks, and parking in terms of number of parking spaces required will still be regulated by the city's existing code. These standards would be applicable citywide, with the exception of properties located within the downtown specific plan, as the DTSP has their own standards for these types of projects. At this point, as previously mentioned, we wanted to bring this item just to inform the council this is coming forward before we start public hearings for this item, but also wanted to get any input and have the opportunity for the council to ask any questions if there are of these standards. Once we get any feedback tonight, the next step would be to present this to the planning commission at a public hearing for a recommendation to city council with ultimate consideration for adoption. And again, these standards will only be applicable to these projects that applicants submit under these eligible Senate bills. Currently, right now, we have two projects that are applying under these bills, so we don't have any objective standards right now in place. However, some of these projects, they are willing to work with staff in regards to addressing some of our architectural comments, but they don't have to. The goal of these standards is to have these in place where they will have to comply with these requirements. That concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
As I went through this, it was very well-written. I love the intent of local control. The one thing that got me worried, and you've already addressed, was height limit, because I was reading about the setbacks, and it sounded beautiful, and I saw how two was this, three was this, and I saw the line four or more, and I went, oh, no. But I'm really happy to hear that we already have that covered within our other codes. I thought it was a very, a well-written report, and I think it's best that we have this in place beforehand so that we can go ahead and make sure that these properties are designed in a way that fits in with our town.
I'll just say that, you know, I reviewed it, there's a lot to digest here, and I'll be taking more time to go through that. I did notice on, in the council packet, page 812, but it's page 10 of your report, Figure 11 G1 perimeter walls, it's outlined as a photo, but there is absolutely no reference to it in the text under section G. So you might clean that up somewhere in there. I personally don't like that at all, that picture, but, more specifically, I just don't like that type of development. But just so I'm clear and the public's clear, some of this is not necessarily within our parameter to regulate, right? I mean, this is just, realistically, we can only have some guides, but we have to accept a lot of this.
Correct. So we actually came up with these standards, we worked with an architectural consultant that has drafted these standards for other cities. And again, the overall goal, so right now, if projects come in, a typical project, they'd be subject to a development plan review board. And that's our architectural design review board, so we provide comments and requirements they have to comply with. These by-right projects don't have to go through that process. So the goal of these is to kind of replace that discretionary review process and have these standards in place.
Was that consultant familiar with our community at all?
They haven't, they did work with us, I believe, when we did the charrette for the 2016 downtown specific plan, but prior to that, they haven't done any work. But they've done work with other similar cities that are compatible to San Dimas, but they haven't done any work here in the city.
Yeah, I guess, when I, what stood out to me, at least, and the images go a long way, is that a lot of this is just stack and pack, and it's not, it is not what we are traditionally accustomed to here. So, I mean, to your best knowledge, all of these images are consistent with what the standards are proposing, right?
Yeah, so- Yeah, so these standards are, when you say stack and pack, I'm assuming to like high-density projects, right? Multiple stories?
Yeah.
So those projects, essentially, those projects right now, under these current state laws, they can come in and build by right without any review. These standards are intended to mitigate some of the impacts of those projects. So while we might not be able to say you can't build here, we'll at least say you're going to have to follow certain standards. If you're going to, if the law is going to allow you to build four stories, we're going to make you step back those stories. So that's the intent of these standards that we have before you tonight.
All right, thank you.
And these standards can be amended? Should we ever decide to change anything?
Yes, they can.
Is that something that we would have to go back to a consultant and go through this process again? Or is that something, if we identified a particular issue later on down the road, we could, just as a council, revisit the design standards and just make an alteration?
Yeah, we wouldn't have, at that point, we wouldn't have to go through another consultant. We hired a consultant just to go through the process and create the framework for this, which is paid through a grant. But any future amendments, we believe staff can handle.
And I may have missed it, but did the planning commission see this and opine on it at all?
Not yet. So we wanted to bring it to the city council first, just to make you aware that this is coming forward and get an initial feedback. The next step would be to take this before the planning commission so they can provide a recommendation to the city council.
So do we need a motion to have you move it forward? Or is this just for letting us know?
Essentially, just seeking any input that you may have. You'll have a chance to provide input again once it gets to you before for final consideration, but we just wanted to have you, make you aware that this is coming-
But it doesn't require an official action?
No.
My official feedback is I don't like any of it, but I understand it. And that's my official feedback. But I thank you for your work on it to soften the blow as much as we can. So thank you for that.
Thank you, and your crew, we appreciate it. Any other questions of Louis? Thank you. You don't seem to be moving very far. You don't seem to be moving very far. Three firsts before one? Is that what you want? Here's two. Where's three? I see two, but I don't see three. Okay. All right, we're going to flip-flop two and one. We're going to go to public hearing number two. Discussion and consideration of ordinance 1319 to approve municipal code text amendment 20-05, an amendment of chapter 18.518, specific plan two of the San Dimas municipal code to amend grading limits within the planning area one and make various cleanup text amendments and adoption of associated mitigated negative declaration. Staff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Again, the item before you is municipal code text amendment 20-05. It's an amendment of chapter 18.518, which relates to specific plan 11 to amend the grading limits within planning area one. By way of background, the council has seen this a few times before, but I'll provide you a little bit of background so you can get you up to speed. Again, this is specific plan 11, was created in 1983. It consists of four different planning areas, planning areas one through four. Planning area consists of the custom homes, lots on Cali Cristina and Passeo de Cinda. As originally written, SB 11 allowed grading only necessary for the residence, garage, and vehicular access. In 1987, the development plan review board adopted a policy of allowing a maximum of 200 cubic yards of grading and couldn't fill in excess of the grading allowed by code. Essentially, this allowed swimming pools to be built and other improvements in the backyard. More recently, at the direction of the city attorney, because this was just a policy and not codified in the code, we stopped this practice as it was not in compliance with the environmental impact report regarding grading as when the first track, the track was first developed. This is, on your screen, this is a map of SB 11. The entire area is highlighted in red. Area one is outlined in yellow, and this is the area where these grading limits have approved would be applicable. By way of background, so started working on this back in 2020. That's when the city council initiated the amendment to allow additional grading. September in 2020, councils had a study session to discuss the grading options. And there was no solution determined at that meeting. They continued it, and then the pandemic hit, which delayed the project and put this on hold. This was brought back in March of 2021. At that point, the city council discussed it again and provided a direction to provide a grading allowance of 1,000 cubic yards. In October of 2021, after the staff researched this and prepared MND, this was presented to the planning commission. They voted 3-2, with two commissioners recusing themselves, and recommended approval of the MCTA, and the city prepared MND to the city council. On October 26, 2021, the item was scheduled before the council for consideration. Prior to the meeting, staff received a letter from the HOA's attorney, raising concerns with the city prepared MND. After discussing with city attorney, it was recommended that we table the item, continue it to the data concern, and hire a consultant to prepare an MND. That kicked us out to January 19 of 2023. We did hire Ultra Systems to prepare an MND. It was circulated for public review comment. We went before the planning commission, and they voted 3-2 to recommend approval of the MCTA, but recommended against the new MND. And the reasons before that is they had concerns with the number of surveys that were being requested, required by the MND. They felt that it was onerous on the property owners and directed staff, recommended that the city council direct staff to potentially do a pre-review of the MND to see whether or not these surveys can be reduced. March 14, 2023-
I'm sorry, you said it was 3-2, but-
3-02, I'm sorry.
Right, two abstentions-
Yes.
-that were not opposed. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we had two commissioners at that time that lived in the area, so they had to recuse themselves. March 14, 2023, the city council heard, considered the item with the new MND. They voted to table the MCTA and directed staff to seek a pre-review of the MND. As a result, staff did an RFP to select a different environmental consultant. We hired SOMAS. They prepared, they reviewed the MND and prepared a revised biological section, and they were able to reduce the mitigation measures, which I'll get into later in the presentation. The document was recirculated for public comment. And November 21, 2024, the planning commission heard this item again with the revised MND. They voted 4-01. At this point, we only had one commissioner living in the area, so he recused himself, and they recommended approval of the revised MND and the MCTA to the city council. Just to give you a little more analysis in what the amendments actually will achieve, the amendment will allow up to 1,000 cubic yards of additional grading for properties within SB 11 area one. Grading for one pool and spa will not count towards the 1,000 cubic yards, but will still be subject to the MND. The amendment will include standards related to wall design and landscaping to minimize impacts from this new grading. Such standards would include retaining wall standards that will limit the wall height, required decorative block, tan, earth tone colors to kind of blend in with the surroundings. In terms of landscaping standards, will require landscaping at the base of the wall, trees required at the base of the wall space every 15 feet to further obscure these retaining walls when they are required. And no grading will be allowed within the open space, scenic eastman areas of these properties. These are the, in green, the open space scenic eastman areas where no grading will be allowed as no developments allowed within these areas. Now, in terms of the environmental, I touched on it briefly, but I'll get onto, so initially, when we first started the process, the city prepared an MND that was ultimately challenged by the HOA's attorney. Therefore, we selected RFP, selecting the environmental consultant, Ultra Systems to prepare a new MND. This is the one that had about 17, 18 surveys, which the commission and the council both agreed that it was, it just seemed onerous on the residents and wanted staff to do a pre-review. We hired SOMAS to complete a pre-review, and they completed an updated biological analysis. The following impacts were identified, which can be mitigated to a less significant threshold. Both SOMAS and Ultra Systems had the same results regarding these. It was biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soils, hydrology and water quality, and most of the concern related to, measures related to biological resources. Again, Ultra Systems' MND had, originally had 17 measures. Eleven of those were surveys. Under SOMAS's revised biological report, they identified 13 measures, seven of which have surveys that are required if anybody's going to do grading in the backyard areas. It is important to note that grading proposed in previously disturbed areas may not be subject to completion of the surveys, and I'll touch on that in the next slide. The revised MND was recirculated from June 21 to July 21 to allow the public to comment on it. We did receive four comments during that coming period. One was from CDFW, three other ones were from residents. CDFW's California Department of Fish and Wildlife requested clarification and recommended revisions to certain mitigation measures. Some recommendations were incorporated into the MND. However, recommendations that added unnecessary surveys or gave CDFW authority over some of these surveys where it's not required were not incorporated. Of the three residents, one resident expressed concerns with the required surveys to grade their property and recommended that 200 cubic yards for pools be exempted and exempt areas that already have been disturbed. One resident supported the revised MND, and third resident supported the revised MND but recommended that the surveys be required of all properties, not just SB 11. And it's important to note that the SOMAS's version did reduce the mitigation measures, but it's important to note that it's still in compliance with CEQA. So we feel comfortable moving this document forward should the council adopt it. Within the MND, there is a spreadsheet that's on your screen right now that shows all the 36 parcels and shows, identifies which surveys they're required to do. It's important to note that just because a parcel has an X on it and the survey is required, doesn't necessarily mean that they will have to complete a full survey. What I mean by that, if they say, for example, there is, they require a survey for a net catcher, they will have to hire qualified biologists to come out. But if the grading is proposed in areas that have already been cleared, either for maintenance purposes or for fire brush clearance purposes, they still have to hire the biologists to come out, but the biologists will look at the area, and if there's nothing there, like it's been disturbed and cleared out, and there's no opportunities for either wildlife or vegetation, they'll just check off and say, you know what, there's nothing here. They won't need to do the full survey. So it'll be a lot less expensive than doing a full survey. So that's important to note. These properties, you know, we heard from residents saying that there's no vegetation where they want to do work. When we, as part of CEQA, when we look at the parcel, you look at the entire parcel. So a lot of these parcels at the bottom of the slope where in the scenic eastman, there is vegetation. So CEQA looks at everything. So there might be vegetation at the bottom of the slope where they're not going to do work, but they still have these requirements for the surveys. But if the biologist comes out and sees that the area they're going to do grading is pretty much been cleared out, as you do annually, either the resident or the fire department, it's less likely that they're required to do the survey. But at least that will check off the requirement under the MND. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the planning commission recommend the city council adopt the revised MND and introduce proposed ordinance approving the municipal code text amendment 20-05. Our consultant that prepared the biological report is here to answer any questions. And lastly, I'd like to point out that we did receive two public comments after the reports were published, and those copies have been provided to you on the dais. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions?
Yes, I have two. With respect to the California Fish and Wildlife Department, given that we'd incorporate all their recommendations, is there any chance that they could take us to court or any kind of litigation to force us to adopt any of the standards that we may not have incorporated into this? Do we foresee any action from them?
It's not likely. A lot of these are recommendations, items, comments that required, that were actually required, we did incorporate into the mitigation measures. For example, clearing, making it clear as to the process and what's required. But for example, where they were asking to us to include additional surveys as a recommendation, we felt that it wasn't required to do it. So we feel comfortable that we're in standing.
So we expect the risk is pretty much zero or low?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then on the ordinance 1319 itself, I think there may be a typo, but I was just curious as to when you look down, whereas on January 11, 2022, the city council voted 3-2, council members Ebner and Bertone Davis opposed to enter an agreement with Ultra Systems. What was their reasoning, or why did they choose not, why did they not want to enter into an agreement with Ultra Systems? And I assume Bertone Davis is probably a typo there. It's council members Ebner and Bertone.
Yeah, I didn't know 100% to be honest with you, but in my recollection is that they felt that we shouldn't be moving forward with the project, and thus them voting to move forward with the consultant. I don't think it was necessarily related to the consultant, they just didn't want to move forward with the process. So my understanding is they voted against it.
I have no further questions.
I have one question. When a private residence goes to look for the biologist, do we have a sort of list with, you know, recommendations of people to call? Can we do that? Do we do that? Who do they go to?
So we don't have a list. We typically don't make it a practice to provide a list for any types of services because it's like recommending. But the MND does have language that requires a qualified biologist or a qualified botanist. There are some surveys that do require certain permits, so they have to go through that process. And lastly, we do have the ability to, in the event that surveys, reports are submitted, if we have concerns with them, we have the ability to do a pre-view of those reports. But we don't have a list of-
Okay.
-biologists or botanists.
I guess it's just very important to me that we are paying attention to these highly-educated people that are going to be coming and making these decisions because the number one priority is to keep everyone safe, I think. So as long as we're keeping safety first, that's good.
I just had one question, and I think it was, I saw it in the report, but just to be sure, I know when we started this discussion many moons ago, that at that time, the only exemption for grading was a pool, that somebody, the pool was actually specifically exempted. And I think the language that you had up in the PowerPoint shows that pools continue to be exempted, but only subject to the updated mitigated negative declarations. Is that right?
Yes, so what you're referring to was a DPRB policy that allowed an additional 200 cubic yards of grading for either pools or other improvements in the backyard. It was mainly pools that were done. We stopped that practice because it was a policy and it was not codified. So what we did in this amendment, we are allowing up to 1,000 cubic yards. In addition to that, we would allow for the development of one pool, spa, no limits on grading, but it will still be subject to the surveys on the MND.
Okay, all right, good.
Okay. There's a public hearing. Any further questions before we open the public hearing? Public hearing is over. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter, come to the podium?
My name's John Begin. I live at 1539 Cali Cristina in area one. And I'm sorry you guys had to go through this process.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. It's a public hearing, right? No timer, right? Is that correct?
No timer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry you had to go through this process. I'm sorry our HOA previous board members costed you all this money. They are no longer on the board, and you will never have that problem again. They are no longer on the board, and you will never have that problem again. And I'm sorry that SEQA, you're doing this to follow SEQA's guidelines that tell you guys how to maintain your property in your own town. I don't really believe in that, but you're doing what you're supposed to do. We have the best of what you could come up with based on the circumstances, and the residents will be able to make their properties work for what they need to do with these conditions right here. And once again, I'm sorry you guys had to go through this process. It's, it should have never costed the city this kind of money, and I feel bad for it, I really do. I'm sorry about that. But thank you for your time and going through the process, and it sounds like it's going to give some relief to some people, and hopefully the seven lots that we have left over, which should let you know that if you approve a tract of that quality and those view rights and everything that's up there, and there's seven lots that are still not built on, there's something wrong. You know, it's not because they didn't feel like building on them. Those are the remaining lots, the majority of them are difficult lots to build on. They're steeper, they don't have any flat areas to work with, they need more grading. And the original rules of the tract that the council approved back in the day was a mistake. The idea of zero rule, zero grading outside of the house, garage, and driveway physically doesn't work. I mean, you have to have a walkway to get to the front door of your house, you have to have some grading to put like an air conditioner pad or a side yard or something. And the idea of zero grading, that should have drawn a red flag right from the beginning. And I just hope that if you ever have these kind of, you know, projects that ever show up again during your guys' term, that maybe you get a little bit of extra advice from people who do this stuff for a living, because I guarantee if I would have been around during those days, I would have been the first one up here saying, look, guys, you can't build like this. Every home that everybody lives in doesn't build, doesn't live this way. All the rest of the two hundred and thirty-five homes that were on there had two million yards of grading moved. You're trying to tell me that an extra thousand yards right now that you're going through now would have made any difference at all in this entire tract? I'm not believing that. So there's just some common sense that wasn't used back in the day, and it forced you guys to clean up the messes. And so, once again, I'm sorry you had to do this, but thank you for doing it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council concerning this matter?
Hi, good evening. My name's Art Berueter, and I live at fifteen forty-four Cali Christina. I've been a member of San Dimas for over sixty years. I've owned four homes here. Twenty-four years ago, we bought the lot and had a home built. The pool that we eventually was allowed to have is down forty-five feet from the, forty-five steps from the, from the street. That was okay twenty years ago. We do a lot of looking at it nowadays, my wife and I, that it's hard to get up and down from there. And there's one thing that just eats at me, it won't have anything to do with your, with your own thoughts about this, but I have to say it. For all of us that live in Area One, not one dollar of the money that we give to the association goes to do anything for that area. Nothing, nothing. Doesn't pay for insurance, it doesn't allow.
No, you're fine, sir.
I should be done? It doesn't allow any grading for us to have done, any maintenance on the areas that, like I had started out with two and a half acres, I think I've had my home and everything, so there's about an acre and a half sit there that I can do nothing with. It's inspected every six months by the fire department, and we get a letter that says we're in compliance with everything to say we pass at that. All of us do the same thing, they get those letters too. And all of them have the same issue, where not one damn thing goes to do any good for us. And so we have been trying to get this changed. We have seen maybe as many as a half dozen people walk away from those, those lots because they can't develop on them. And we have people saying, oh, they're worried about this and worried, they're worried about that, but it doesn't affect them. My, my home is up against Covina Hills Road. It drains into that area. It's not going to fall on anybody, and most of these other homes aren't either. So we would certainly appreciate after this three years or more than three years, that you would allow us to make this one change to our area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council concerning this matter?
You've all gotten to know me very well in the last four years, every single one of you, and I appreciate every single one of you for everything you do for our city, for listening to us and putting the time into our area. You really put your hearts into it. Ryan's been there, the mayor's been there, Eric's been there, Eric's been there, I'm sure Marco has. You know, I've seen you, Marco, I know Louis has. Quite, quite a few have been up there, you know the area almost like your own neighborhood now. It's changed in the last four years. Back in twenty twenty, it was a very crazy time in this city. That's why I came out, and you've seen me at almost every single possible council meeting I can be at, every planning commission meeting, as well as I know Sherri Garwick very well, I've been at Parks and Rec meetings, and I was at the Park and Rec meeting for the pickleball, and, and when we brought it up. So I've gotten very involved with the city, and it was due to the fact that there were a lot of very uneducated people and residents in twenty twenty, and it was a very hard time for our city due to social media and that and COVID. We had people come after us with podcasts, we had people on every Facebook page, every Empowered San Dimas, also Instagram, as well as some newspapers, which, which we're not going to talk about, but everything is saved, everything is downloaded, everything is snapshotted, and it was not fair. It was all out on misinformation, it was from our HOA president back then, that thought that our personal properties were the HOA's land, and it was not. So in order for any type of lawsuit or anything, I understand that the city had to take action and hold off and make sure you did the right thing to correct the, not this, it's actually the MCTA, but if you in our neighborhood, these have been in our streets in front of our homes for over three and a half years. If you drive down my street, myself, Mr. Wills, Mr. Berueter, myself, twenty-nine other neighbors have had these signs in front of our homes. Everybody that walks by and comes up, what is that? We educated them on what a municipal text code amendment is, and we would love to take them down. It's been four years. As well as we showed up at meetings with thirty-something people wearing those shirts, Margie, Margie Green knows, that was a planning commission, went, what the heck is this? It was a pray just to know that this is still out there and we're working together with the city. That, now that all that opposition and craziness, there's not a single person here, there's not one single person here that caused all of that problem with the misinformation. They're not here to say they're sorry, they're not here to say that they misunderstood and caused us, as well as the city, over three hundred thousand dollars. That money could have went to possibly another deputy, possibly the pickleball courts, possibly a lot of good for the city on something that, we appreciate you guys taking time to help us out. You got to do your job to protect the city and the codes and the laws, but you've also worked with us residents. I've sent out the, the last four petitions, we have a new council member, we have a new planning director, we have a new planning commission, we have, what else is there that's new? There's a lot that's changed in four years. So I also appreciate that Rachel talked to me on the phone so I can educate her a little bit. You guys have twenty, this one, this petition that was as of this week, has thirty-seven signatures in favor. These are residents on our street, you look at Cali Christina, Passail, this is twenty, at least twenty-nine homeowners right here that is for this as well. They're all on vacation, city, they're at Christmas things, some are sick, so a lot of them are not here, but they are on this, on this paper. As well as all the other petitions that you've seen through the other council meetings as well. You have a lot, a lot of support for this. The thing that I wanted to also say is now due to SEQA, it doesn't coincide very well with the new fire laws. California state has a lot of fire laws and restrictions that we have, we have to grade our, and we debate our land now due to the fire, the severe fire zone that we're in. So you may have to see the planning department on some new owners that come in, we have to balance that out somehow. And it's kind of, kind of like a basket, it doesn't work very well. So you may hear some things about that. Also, the two vacant homes that were not done ten years ago or four years ago, they're done. We have, I came in here with the vacant homes and our land and crime, we haven't had crime in five months. Five months, my area has not, that's amazing. Two hundred and sixty-two homes, December first, we did have our cars broken into, but we got, we got the guy, we know who he is. So just so, a lot of good things were happening up there, we have a new board, a great board, a working board, a new HOA board that knows the codes, that knows restrictions, that knows building. Our board is an architects, we have builders, we have engineers in our neighborhood, and we're a great community now. We all talk, it's fantastic, there's nothing hidden, everything is transparent. So, so you haven't seen the problem and you don't see the opposition here anymore. The only problem now is we have SB nine and SB ten in the last four years, or possibly we're stuck with maybe somebody trying to split one of those seven lots where I might have six homes instead of one. We have ways that we can handle that, you guys can't do it, Louis and the city, you guys, but the HOA can, so we'll handle that on our own, hopefully we won't be here for that. The one question that I did have was on page two thousand seventeen, item number six, the landscape and tree drought tolerant shrubs and that type of information. I'm hoping that due to the fire codes and SEQA, we can work on what has to be planted there. I know you want native trees and native, but if it's, we have to have certain fire ladders, we can't plant things, certain distances away, certain, due to where we live, and, and two acres, five acres, some people have seven. So I hope there will be leeway there with the planning department and the people that will be, will be building. I did lose a neighbor because it's taken four years, their home was approved, the backyard was not approved. They got tired of waiting for four years, costs a lot of money sitting on that land and property taxes and, and we debating. So I'm sad about that, but I do have a new owner coming in, and I'm hoping they'll be able to have a pool. This is why we've done this. Also, I went back and what, what page two thousand thirty, I was very appreciative by either Kimberly Newstons, Newstis, or Deborah, or Louis, I'm not sure, but you found the minutes from April fourteenth, nineteen eighty-seven. That was when the DPRB evidently allowed the two hundred, those minutes for the DPR minute were missing, and all of a sudden, they're in, they're in here. So I thought that was interesting. Also, back then, Bertone and Ebner, they were on city council back in ninety-one, ninety-two, and ninety is when Ebner came in. Back then, there was also a housing commission or housing committee back, if you go back those years, and Ebner was on that. So a lot of this preserving the land and scenic easement, which we give back to the city, half of our land is given back for people to look at, the Chaparral, the, I don't know if the Bumblebee's there, everything that's there, she knows, this fantastic biologist that you guys just hired, she's fantastic. She's actually, you can go up to her and talk to her, and we're the homeowners. So I really like her, and, and thank you for hiring her. So back then, they were worried about the trees, the land, the scenic easements and everything for the city, but the problem was they weren't working or, or there for the residents and the homeowners and the, and the building, and things that made sense back then. So if you go back and you go through the archives, the city now has all your minutes and all your archive minutes since the last four years, you have a new software system. It's very easy. Prior to that, Kimberly and all of them were trying to put that data on the new software that you have, which is fantastic. Thank you for spending the money on, on the city's website and making it easy for your residents to go back and look up minutes, planning commission minutes, DBR minutes, and you can look at who was on city council back there, who was on the DPRB, who was on, and I was looking for who approved that policy, the DPRB policy of the two hundred cubic yards back then, and it's in the packet. So I was really, I think that's fantastic, whoever found it and, and put it on there. So for Eric Nikano, if you want to go back, you'll notice, and you can trace back through all the commissions and committees and housing and all that, who were on those committees and what their vision was. Their vision were the two that never voted for this, that always voted no on moving any kind of dirt, any kind of land, helping us residents up there and helping our HOA keep our property values high. With seven empty lots and crime, people partying on the lots, it wasn't a beautiful area. Now, all those seven lots, the new HOA board, we have those owners landscaping the front of the lots with trees and plants. If you walk up there, it's not like what it was, it's beautiful, it's like a park. So we're all working together to keep our property values high, to bring in new neighbors, to finish this neighborhood, and you guys are helping that. The other two council members that voted no, they're not here anymore, so they retired. A lot, a lot has happened, and like I said, a lot of our opposition, they're not here. So, so there's no longer any misinformation, it took a long, it's a long road, long journey, but I, like I said, we appreciate every single one of you, and we'd love to have a party if this ever passes and gets through. So thank you very much, and we'd like to take these signs down. So appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Hate to ask this question. Anyone else wishing to speak to the council any further? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Any statements, conversations?
No, I, I'm prepared to make a motion.
I'm prepared to listen.
All right, before I do, I just wanted to make a comment that this issue, this issue would not have gotten to where it got if it wasn't for you, John, again. And pointing out some issues, and so I want to give you credit for pointing out some things that needed to be addressed in the city, and, and I want to give you some credit for your resilience in all of this. It was not, it was not an easy road, and I know there were some bumps along the way. And I know that I also equally thank staff because I also think that there were a lot of things that got brought up along this journey that did need to be addressed, but I do want to give you credit for bringing it to my attention, to another council member's attention, and to the council at that time, albeit maybe not all of us, but most of us heard what you guys were talking about, and we spent time researching the issue and having a lot of hearings and public input regarding it, and a lot of staff time committed to it and a lot of city attorney time committed to it. To that end, I also want to thank Jeff. I know this was a very long process, I know there was a lot of history involved in it, and I know sometimes being the legal eagle, if you will, for the city sometimes can put you to the test, and I think this particular initiative had a lot of history behind it, a lot of practice in the city, but then, you know, also a lot of issues that needed to be addressed, and I think you brought those forward tactfully, and I also want to commend staff and the leadership of the city, you know, that was here then and now and along this journey, because to be honest, this was a very challenging topic and very challenging for the community, very challenging for the council, and, and very challenging even for the planning commission, who I also know spent a lot of time going through all of this. And, and I also want to, he's not here, but I want to commend staff, you know, the council wrapping their heads around a thousand cubic yards was a fun exercise, and I think that, you know, I give staff credit for entertaining what it took to help us understand visually what that is for some of us that are not, you know, to be honest, I mean, until we really started talking about what it would fill this room with and what that looked like, it was hard to picture what that was. And, and I think there was some very outstanding pieces of staff work that came out of all of this, and I'd be remiss not to point that out because I think it made it more consum- And I'd be remiss not to point that out because I think it made it more consumable to the public. And I also want to thank the, the consultants that participated in this process because there was a lot of, there were a lot of factors in this that you just wouldn't think something is, something as small or as large as this would incorporate so many different things. And, and in the end, I think the time, money, and energy has been well spent, at least to get the clarity that we needed to be able to do this for everybody in the community. And it also helps, it also helped solidify, I think, something in the city, you know, about areas of responsibility specifically related to those of the HOA and their CCNRs. And it also helped us begin to better understand those situations, not just with this particular development, but with a bunch of the others. So I just wanted to make those comments, commend everybody. And, and with that being said, Jeff, does it need to be two motions or can it be one motion for both items?
It can be one motion.
Okay. I would move that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-four eighty-nine to adopt the revised drafted mitigated negative declaration and introduce ordinance thirteen nineteen approving municipal code text amendment twenty dash zero five, a request to amend chapter eighteen point five one eight, specific plan eleven to the San Dimas municipal code to amend grading limits within planning area one and make various cleanup text amendments.
I would be prepared to second that if I could just have one moment.
Of all you want.
To say my piece on this, and then I would be happy to second that. I'm sure everybody knows this has been a long road, like Ryan has said. I'm happy to finally see this item come back. I'm grateful for all of the work that staff has put in, not only the staff that is here with us currently, but also Henry No worked on this very heavily. But, you know, it was not an easy task. So thank you so much for everything that staff has put into this. And like Ryan said, thank you to the community who brought forth an issue which affected them personally, but also a wider swath of residents in the, the community as well. And, and clearly, in this instance, we found that the municipal code fell short. And, and I'm, I'm glad that this was brought forward. As, as was brought up in the, the public comments, back then, personal attacks and allegations were thrown out against not only members of the public, but the city council as well. And they were done so pretty casually. And I would love to say that they didn't have any effect on me as a brand-new council member trying to navigate the system and do what I thought was right for the community, but that would be a lie. It, it was definitely an eye-opener when it came to, you know, municipal government, I guess. But I, I'm happy to say that I was heartened to have a conversation with somebody who was a, an opponent back then, who now is okay with this moving forward. And, and that made me feel really good, that we finally, as a community, talked about this issue, wrapped our heads around it, and, and we're moving forward in a direction that, that a lot of different people that had opposing opinions back then can agree on. But at the end of the day, I really hope that the residents of that, that area finally don't have to tolerate unfinished lots in their community after thirty-seven years. And, and I'm very happy that the municipal code will have been cleaned up and hopefully protect the city in, in, you know, the years moving forward. So that's all I have to say, and I'm happy to second Ryan's motion.
Any further comments? Well, I have a few, but in the interest of time, I think I'm going to let them go. I think Ryan and Eric have covered them both. We've, it's been a long journey, and I want to thank all the staff that's been involved. John, thank you very much for your tenacity. And there's a lot of people out there who were standing next to you, and we eventually got through it. I'm sorry that you guys are losing a neighbor over the length of time, but it has been a, a long four years. And at this point, I'll call for, have you got a motion? We have a second? All in favor?
Mayor, mayor, mayor. Before we do the vote, we have to have the city clerk read the title of the ordinance.
Oh, I thought Ryan read it a few minutes ago.
I did, I actually thought so too, but then I compared and it's a little different.
All right. Great job, Ryan.
I read what's in the staff report on the recommendation.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the rest, please?
Ordinance thirteen nineteen. In ordinance of the city council of the city of San Dimas, county of Los Angeles, approving municipal code text amendment twenty dash zero five, an amendment to chapter eighteen point five one eight, specific plan eleven of the San Dimas municipal code to amend grading limits within planning area one and make various cleanup text amendments, which requires adoption of an associated mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program.
I'll move we waive further reading, introduce ordinance thirteen nineteen and adopt or resolution twenty twenty-four eighty-nine.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. I just say that the only place I want to see the yes on MTCA is in a museum somewhere.
Everybody gets a shirt for Christmas. You wait.
Thank you very much. Let's see, what time is it? You guys want to take a five-minute break? Yes. We'll go in recess for five minutes, which means seven in English. Consideration of vesting tentative tract map twenty-four dash one, VTTM eight four four three six, subtitle two, subdivided two adjoining parcels into five parcels within a single-family agricultural zone, which are addressed as seven twenty North Oakway Avenue, APN eight three nine two dash zero two three dash zero three four, and an unaddressed parcel at APN eight three nine two dash zero one five dash zero four one. Marco?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Marco Spinoza, Planning Manager. I'll be presenting the item on behalf of Senior Planner Ann Moore, who presented, who prepared the staff report tonight. The subject property is located at seven twenty North Oakway Avenue at the intersection of West Gant Street and North Oakway Avenue. The subject site is comprised of two parcels. Parcel one has direct access off of Oakway Avenue, and parcel two is accessed through parcel one. The subject parcels are both zone single-family agriculture, sixteen thousand, and combined they equal two point six five acres in size. The two lots are currently vacant, however, parcel one was previously developed with a house, barn, and storage structures. On August twenty-five, August twenty-five, twenty twenty-two, the Development Plan Review Board approved a new single-family residence for the parcel one and the removal of eight mature trees on what is to become lot one of the proposed tract map. Construction of the house will be set to begin next year. This request is, was considered by the Planning Commission on November twenty-first of this year. At the meeting, a resident spoke about traffic concerns relating to existing conditions and the concerns of additional vehicles from the five new parcels. The Traffic Safety Committee previously had heard the resident's concerns prior to the applicant submitting this application. At this time, the Public Works Department will be addressing the, the resident's concerns and looking into them for a future potential date with the Traffic Safety Committee. At the hearing, the Planning Commission also voted five oh to recommend approval to the city council of the tentative tract map. The proposed map would create five parcels with access for each parcel coming off the private driveway shown in green on the screen, which begins at the intersection of Gant and Oakway Avenue. No access will be provided off Gladstone Street, which is to the north up the hill, or Cody Lane to the east. All the lots will have public sewer connections and have a, also have a private fire hydrant that will be installed near the east property line of lot number three, as shown also on the screen. A six-foot-high block wall will be required at the rear and on the side yard property lines of each of the parcels. No houses are proposed for lots two through five at this time. Only lot one will be, be developed with the previously approved house and will also be occupied by the applicants. The proposed lots will meet the minimum lot size of sixteen thousand square feet as required by the zone. The minimum lot size is calculated based on the net usable area, which would exclude the square footage of the private driveway. The table on the screen shows how the proposed gross and net of each of the lots. The proposed net lot size range from sixteen thousand one hundred square feet to twenty-eight thousand two hundred twenty-five square feet, with the average net lot size being nineteen thousand two hundred and ninety-seven square feet. Also, per the standards of the single-family agricultural zone, the keeping of two horses will be allowed on these lots. Staff will work with the applicant in the future to make sure that the placement of the new homes do not impede on the potential placement of the horse corrals if the applicants wish to have one, or if any of the adjacent residents have them at this time, at that time. With that, staff, staff and the planning commission recommend the city council adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash ninety approving tentative, vesting tentative tract map twenty-four oh one. And that concludes staff's report, and the applicant's here to answer any questions.
Any questions, the staff?
I have one, but go ahead. So I saw that previously the Planning Commission had approved the removal of trees. I think there were eight of them that were, is this part of this as well? So I, I guess I'm trying to understand, like, if.
The applications, I'm sorry. The application for the new house and the trees were approved previously, and that application still is valid. And. And as they move forward with the development of the house on Parcel 1, they will have those trees removed.
So all those trees then are on Parcel 1 only then? That's the reason why they're being removed?
Yeah, so if we can... So on the screen you'll see what says Lot 1. When the house was submitted, the applicant already had the intention to submit this application, so they designed it with the intent that that property line for Lot 1 to the east would be there. So the trees proposed for removal are only in that general area.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Sure. Is, I'm assuming, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Yep. Who's the applicant? This guy? Okay. One, I just want to...
They're representative.
You're the representative, okay. One, I just want to thank you for, for developing, for planning these lot sizes. I think that's awesome. Just a question to you is, the lot sizes themselves, is it, would it, I guess, would you, or, I mean, you don't have a crystal ball, so I guess my question is, like, these are massive lot sizes, right? And so traditionally, everyone's developing SF 7500 or similar. So could you just speak a little bit about why these lot sizes are developed the way they are, just from the applicant's perspective?
Yeah. Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you for having us. And in regards to your question to the lot sizes, it's, and it goes back to your statement of stack and pack. It just doesn't match the community. So we come with, we want to respect kind of the existing community, and we are just adding kind of what is already there, and it's beautiful, it's single-family residence. And we believe that this is just a continuation of what is already present.
Thank you. I think the only thing I would say, and you don't have to respond to it, but my only concern with lot sizes is big, is that it would not be unfeasible to sell these lots off individually and then lot split them again, and then we end up with more high-density onto those parcels. I would hope that, and I'm supportive of this project, and I will be, but I would hope that these parcels are kept intact, and it's not the applicant's intention to flip these lots after this is done, so that we end up with 2, 4, 6, 8, 10 houses on those lots, right?
And, yeah, there's no intentions of, you know, what you, what you see here is our vision for those, for those lots.
And I want to commend you for that, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I guess just a question for staff. With the single-family agricultural zoning, would those be subject to lot splits and the like, without us changing the zoning to single-family residential?
Would they be subject to lot splits, like SB 9?
Correct.
Yes.
Even with the agricultural on it?
Correct.
Oh, interesting.
Any further questions? On the, on the diagram here, it says fire hydrant, fire hydrant to the west of, of the properties. That's an existing fire hydrant there, and you're going to, is this going to be a private, proposed private fire hydrant?
So the proposed would be private, correct? And then there's an existing one off of Oakway already?
Oakway, yeah. Okay. All right, any further questions? I'll entertain a motion one way or the other.
Oh, is it a public hearing? Is it a public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. There's only one public guy. Anyone, anyone wishing to speak to the council at this time? Want to say anything else? No? Okay. Seeing nobody come forward, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, we'll bring it back to the council for, for questions or anything else.
I just would, just reiterate the fact that I do appreciate the thoughtfulness of the project, and I do hope sincerely that the continuity of those lots is maintained. I think it'll add a lot of value, I think, to the community around. And to be honest, I mean, equestrian use property is something that we cherish, and we're, we're very, it's very scarce. And so the idea of being able to put some new homes, which we do need, and also have the added benefit of a large lot size that could afford for that opportunity, and that space in town is, is huge. It's a great opportunity. And so I appreciate you identifying that, and I appreciate you providing us the opportunity to see that become something great in the community.
Any further questions?
I don't have any further.
Go ahead.
Nope.
No, you go ahead, you got something to say?
I was just going to make a motion, but if you have something to say, go ahead.
No, I just want to make a comment. I did visit this property a couple of times over the last 2 or 3 years. Kept watching it and seeing what it was going to do. I spoke with the developer, and he kept promising me that this was going to be big, and it was going to be good, and that we were all going to be happy. And then I kept saying, when is this going to happen? And I'm glad to see that it's happening. And that's also just one additional question. At the, at the corner, no, not even, not for you. At the corner of the, where the old Little Market is, is that project still going forward?
Yes, it is. It's in plan check at this time.
All right, thank you. I'll, I'll listen to a motion.
I'll move that we, I'm sorry, I lost my place. My iPad froze, I apologize. I move that we adopt Resolution 2024-90 approving vesting tentative track map 24-01. A request to subdivide 2 adjoining parcels into 5 parcels located at 720 North Oakway Avenue APN 8392-020034 and unaddressed parcel APN 8392-015-041 within the single-family agricultural 16,000 zone.
Second.
Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries 5-0. Build some nice houses. This time we'll recess the city council meeting, and we'll reconvene the San Dimas Housing Approved December 12th, 2023 Housing Authority minutes.
So moved.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Appointment of members of the authority, Chair and Executive Director.
I move that the mayor be appointed to the Chair and the Executive Director as City Manager.
Second. Any further comments?
Doing a great job, Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. I'll be the Chair. Brad McKinney will be the Executive Director.
Don't let us down, Brad.
We'll move on to item number 2 or 3. Approve the Administrative Services Agreement between the City of San Dimas and the San Dimas Housing Authority.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries 5-0. Okay? Receive, receive and file a Housing Authority annual report, audit report?
Move that we receive and file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. We'll conclude the Housing Authority meeting, and we'll reconvene the San Dimas Public Facilities Financing Corporation. Approved that December 12th, 2023, San Dimas Public Facilities Financing Corporation minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries 5-0. Appointment of members of the corporation, President, Vice President, Secretary, Treasurer.
Mr. Mayor, I nominate Emmett Bedar for President, Vice President, Mayor Pro Tem, Council Member Nakano, and Secretary Treasurer Brad McKinney, City Manager.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, 5-0. We'll move into oral communications. Members of the audience, speakers are limited to 3 minutes or as may be determined by the Mr. Shirley, you're the only one out there that might want to say something.
The lone survivor.
Hearing none, we'll, we'll move on to City Manager reports.
Just want to wish everybody a happy holiday, and that's all. No report tonight. Thank you.
City Attorney?
I also have no reports. Thanks, Mayor.
Members of the council, council members, reports on meetings attended at the expense of the local agency pursuant to AB 1234, GC 53232.3D. You guys got any, you been anywhere? Nobody? Okay. And we'll move on to City Council requests for future items. Comments? Mr. Nakano?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would request that at our next meeting in January, that we look at the City Council calendar, the meeting calendar. I know there's been some discussions among individual members, or thoughts about individual members about potentially canceling maybe a meeting in the summer, perhaps the one that's right around Thanksgiving, due to all kinds of considerations. So I move that we, or request rather, that we discuss that at our first meeting and look at the full calendar of the year, and then make those determinations together as a body. Is there someone else who's willing to second that decision?
I actually think I requested that at the last council meeting. I don't know if it was being brought back, though. It is, okay, so yeah.
Then there's no necessity, it's done. Wonderful, thank you.
Yep. Good thinking.
Anything else there, here?
I just want to congratulate staff on a great job again for the extravaganza. Looks like everybody was having a fun time. I certainly did. Thank you for all the work that you put into it, and thank you for making 2024 a wonderful year in the city. We really do appreciate all of your hard work and efforts, and we wish you a happy holidays and a happy new year. We look forward to seeing you in the new year.
And, Mr. Weather?
I think everybody knows that, that the entire council was out at the parade. If you didn't stop by, a lot of people did, but if you didn't stop by, we were all together in the, the, what would you call it? Bandwagon? The bandwagon. We're all on the bandwagon. But it, I, I really enjoy our holiday extravaganza every single year. I think staff does a fantastic job planning it and putting that on. I know personally from my extended network of, of people in the San Gabriel Valley, that people come from far and wide to San Dimas on our holiday extravaganza night for our Christmas parade and, and downtown festivities. And, and it's really well orchestrated and put on, and, and so thank you to staff for doing that. I know it's, it's a challenge, it's probably a ton of work, but it doesn't go unnoticed in the community. People do appreciate all of that hard work. And I think we're unique in that regard as well. A lot of cities do Christmas parades and kind of a one-off little thing, and everybody moves along, but San Dimas knows how to do it right, and, and the word's gotten out there, so it's, it's definitely a point of pride for me that I get to host all of my neighboring friends and, and family in San Dimas for our celebration. I think that is all I have, other than Merry Christmas to everybody in the city, happy holidays if you don't celebrate Christmas, and same to our staff. Hope you enjoy a little bit of a break between Christmas and New Year's, and, and thank you for all of the work that you do year-round. It, it definitely is a quick ending to what I thought was a year that just started. I don't know where the year went, but it, it sure has come and gone. But Merry Christmas, everybody, Happy New Year, and we'll see you in January.
I also want to say thank you to our staff, all of our volunteers, for a wonderful holiday extravaganza. Thank you to everybody in the community who came out, who participated, had some fun, you know, on top of the snow, the music, the entertainment, the games, the kids' rides, the food. Also, our stores, our antique stores were packed. I think so much business was done that night. Our restaurants were packed. Hady and Sweet and Savory could not bake fast enough. So it was wonderful seeing our downtown so lively. I know we will work hard to continue to revive our downtown, but that, that event is always one that my family and I really look forward to. And then just wanted to say happy holidays. Remember to shop local. A gift card goes a long way for a small local business. You purchase one of those, you're also helping them through the holidays, and then somebody gets to use that later on. So just shop local, be safe, happy holidays.
Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. One, I'd like to echo everyone else's comments. The holiday extravaganza, I think, was outstanding, second to none. Staff, you continue to do an outstanding job with that, and, you know, you hear it from us every year. But every year it seems to get bigger, and it seems to get more creative. In fact, this year, when I saw the themed map, I was kind of laughing. I said, wow, that's an interesting new take on this, and it was exciting to see those things come to life. I really appreciated how much effort went into not just the parade and the organization before, but it was incredible to see just after the parade how everything stood up after the fact. Seeing that long slide come in at the end of Benita, I think the placement of that was really well-thought, and, and I think that really worked nicely. And I, I just commend you guys. It, it was a great job. I also want to acknowledge and thank the volunteers and the vendors and everybody else that came out and put in the time and the sponsorship, the chamber, and everyone else that's helped out with this. Great work, and, and, I mean, there's, just well done, well done. Unfortunately, you know, in my life, I lost someone I was really dear friends with last Sunday, George Amaza. He's a field training officer at the Industry Sheriff's Station. He was my field training officer. I was his first trainee. That has been a difficult loss, I think, for the community and for the public. That guy was very involved. George was very involved in the community, not just in industry, but he helped youth all over the place with the Explorer Program, competitions, stuff like this, and was a mentor to so many. So he, he's going to be dearly missed, but to that end, the next day, someone else that I had known took their life, and, and that's tough. And that was Monday last week. So I say all this to say that, you know, 988 is a suicide crisis lifeline. It's very difficult during the holidays. You know, people experience a lot of things, and, and so I hope that if you need help, please use those resources like 988 or the Department of Mental Health, or, you know, leverage your community, your faith-based organizations, see your pastor, go to your church, you know, speak with somebody, but get help. And, and I think it's very important that we remember that. And there's a lot of things to be thankful for during this holiday season. We live in a great community here. If you're hearing this message, and you're not on the internet, but on our local cable access channel, you know, I think that the city has done a wonderful job of providing resources to people. And I also want to acknowledge Michael, who has been the benefactor of my MySanDimas requests lately. And I just wanted to give a plug to MySanDimas really fast, so that people remember that is a, we'll say a gift from the City of San Dimas to every person that has a mobile device, whether you have an Android or an iPhone device. I was able to use it to report a raccoon that unfortunately met its demise on foothill and was discarded on the side of the road, and Michael was able to work diligently and quickly to be able to get the Inland Valley Humane Society out there, although while you responded to me quickly, I think their response time could probably be a little bit improved. And then the other part of that is, is you can also report things. I know a lot of people have used it to report people experiencing homelessness or graffiti. But the other thing you can use it for is to report shopping carts. And so, of course, my wife and I were walking, and I happened to notice a Home Goods shopping cart discarded in the wash near San Dimas Canyon Park, and I sent that in, and I think that has been recovered or will be recovered soon. So the good news is you can track your requests and the status of those requests if you choose to be a private reporter, if you will, not anonymous. So I encourage everybody to check that out. And lastly, and as everybody's... And lastly, and as everybody said, I wish everybody a happy holidays. Thank you, staff, for a wonderful year. Thank you to the community, I think, for a great year this year. As we close this out, I just want to say Merry Christmas, happy holidays, happy Hanukkah to those that celebrate Hanukkah and my Jewish friends, and most of all, have a safe and happy new year, and I look forward to working with all of you in the year ahead. Thanks.
Well, I think that we all, everybody sitting up here, and I think I can speak for our entire city staff. We've had one heck of a wild 2024. A lot of things have happened. The pandemic was way behind us, and we're moving forward. The San Dimas Loop is being fixed, so that should soon be done. And we're getting a lot of things finished. And, you know, just take a moment to talk about just last Saturday, the extravaganza. We've said a lot of things, good things, and mean every one of them about what our staff has done. But when we, sometimes when we're talking about staff, we know that we're talking about everyone in the city. But the reality is Parks and Rec, they carry the burden of getting, making sure that event, the public sees that. But there's some people behind the scenes. This year, our staff, once again, the people at the yard, did the work of putting the tree together, okay? That saved the city a tremendous amount of money, but it also gave them staff members the gratification of looking at it and seeing it. There were a lot of people there at night looking at when that lights went on. They were very proud of them. You could see them. You could see them smile because they did that work. We talked about the city council. We normally ride around in the cars. This time, we had a little thing, a little different. We were on a hay wagon, okay? Somebody put those rails on the hay wagon for old men, can't fall off. And I appreciate that. They, they did put some hay down the middle in case some old man fell down, could sit. But the reality is we were able to, they did, they put a little strap around me. But people enjoyed seeing us, and that's, that's it. But they enjoyed it because they did the work with their hands. They put it together. They had an idea. They had a vision. And I wanted to make sure that we thank, reach out and the directors, say a special word to the guys over there in, in the yard who, who did that, didn't, you know, they did it a lot. And we could talk about a lot of things all night long, but I know this city council has to continue another meeting afterwards to talk about special events, and we're going to take care of that. But as everyone has sat up here and everyone in the city, I want to wish everyone in this city a merry, merry Christmas and a happy new year, and a safe and a prosperous new year. We all have loved ones. Let's make sure we reach out to them and visit with them and have a great time. So Merry Christmas. We will convene this meeting again in five minutes in the conference room.